Right, welcome back everyone. We're on to item eight, which is page 29. And this is the Public Art Plan and Development Guide. And we've got Erin and Margie Moore, who is the Chair of the Public Art Panel with us. So, thank you. And you can take the report as read. Margie, is there anything you wanted to touch on as Chair?
I'd just like to briefly say that this Plan and Development Guide builds on a previous plan that was done by Rob Garrett a number of years ago. And one of the main intentions with the plan was to make it more concise and user-friendly and easier for the public to engage and understand the processes for the public art in the city.
Great, thank you, Margie. Erin, is there anything you wanted to comment on, if I like?
Thank you. I'll just add, so for elected members, this was the previous plan here, you may be familiar with it. So, this plan here was 42 pages. We've gone down to an 18-page document, which we're quite pleased about. And I disagree with Margie, I think the document's now much more enabling and clearer for the community, especially since the 2010 plan where the philanthropic community is much more active in this space.
Great, thank you. Right, are there any questions?
Just, it's not to do with the really, but where's the holidays in Huntley Peter Ling caravan gone? It just happens to be in this document as well. Does anyone know where it is?
It's touring, is it?
I'm not sure of its location, but it is a temporary piece of public art that tours around the country.
Is that the brick caravan?
So, we don't own that, it's not part of our city?
It is part of the city.
Yeah, I thought we'd bought it, yeah.
Isn't it Truswai Kato?
We own it, but it tours.
No, Truswai Kato own it.
Truswai Kato do.
Yeah, not the city, yeah.
Thank you.
councillor McPherson?
Yeah, just a question, the photo underneath the caravan reminded me of, I haven't heard what's happening with the Wintec wall. There was supposed, what I understood that was temporary, which was a pity, because I thought it was quite good. But what's happening, is there anything, any plans in place for that? I mean, I'm sort of commenting, if you like, in support of the general thrust of this.
Thank you. Currently, there are no plans, but as you, and I will give feedback to the curator of that work, she'll be very pleased to know that you like that work. I think it was an opportunity to test the wall as a temporary public arts site and hopefully stimulate others to propose temporary public artworks for it. But there's nothing currently underway for it.
Could I make another comment? I'm not an art aficionado myself. Thank you, Garrett. But I nevertheless think that the collection we have, when you put it all together, is fantastic in Hamilton. Trouble is that you practically never see it, even if you're a resident of the central city, you wouldn't see it all together. It would take you a long, long time to, in the normal course of events, to go around it. And I'm wondering how we make better use of that. I mean, this collection in here reminds me of one that I haven't seen for quite a while, and I'm sure it would other people as well, and whether we can have a public art trail or something like that, that's much more out there in the tourist community and generally in the public, so we can actually encourage people to actually view them and promote the city that way. Some other towns and cities you go to seems more concentrated, the public art there, where it's a much bigger city, obviously, and it's spread out all, literally, to the far corners, when we're talking about some of the stuff in the north, the roads, the canoes and so forth, and the gardens piece, which is not in here.
Yeah, this is...
You know, how can we get it out there in a more consolidated way?
Others have brought our attention to that. And last year, Gordon helped drive a public art catalogue or guide, which contains most of the public art that within the city in that guide. And so, that was in response to that concern, that we have all this great artwork, but we weren't celebrating it. So, that was like the first step towards that. So, that guide is available at like the info centre, and Gordon will be able to add, there's other places where it's distributed. And then, what we hope to do is kind of next steps from there is, you know, things like either a trail or an app.
Yeah, an app would seem to be the thing. That's heavily used in other tourist facilities to, as a guide, basically. That could be a guide to the whole city, but focusing on the public art, for instance. That, something like that would be worth spending some money on, if it was able to be updated reasonably regularly.
Yeah. Also, just that here. Write that down. Councillor McPherson, Margie's also involved in, because one of the reasons behind all of this review, and we started way back in 2013, was because we had a 42-page document, we had the policy, we had the public art plan, we had...
Development Guide.
Yeah, Development Guide, and then we had the Arts Agenda.
Yeah, lots of doorstop.
Yeah, yeah, and the Arts Agenda, Creative Waikato and Margie and a whole lot of stakeholders had their first look at that today, and that's the strategy going forward for the city as well. And something like that would definitely be picked up there, I would think. They only met first today, and I popped down to Creative Waikato, but yeah, couldn't agree more. We need to be celebrating and telling those stories.
Sorry, just one other issue. Has anyone mapped, in a geographical sense, where the public art pieces are in the city? Because off the top of my head, it appears that there are one or two quite big gaps in terms of there.
Yeah.
And if you're looking at people viewing public art in their suburb, in their community, there are suburbs where you'd have to travel a long way out to actually see anything, and there are others where there's a bit of a concentration. Now, maybe, you know, when we're looking at the next pieces, we say, is there a place in that part of the city which would fit well?
Well, the intention is to take a kind of balanced approach, and there are priorities that are listed in this document, that sort of guide, where that sort of development would happen. But also, the document is kind of inviting enough that it's not sort of rule-driven, you know, it invites sort of engagement, but also gives clear kind of directions of where the priorities are. You know, for example, with the river plan, it's aligned with that, you know, et cetera. Revitalisation, that's another area for a priority that's listed here.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes, thanks, Chair. Look, I thank councillor McPherson for giving me the opportunity to do a bit of a pitch here, because as Margie has said, last year, we published the public art catalogue reflecting a large number of public art throughout the city. That catalogue was generously donated, a cost of $25,000. Came from a contribution from Wintec in terms of research and academic time, student time, design time, of about $15,000. And we also raised about $10,000 to print 5,000 copies at no cost to council. They have been mailed to every politician in the country, they've been mailed to every art gallery in the country, they are at eyesight, at the museum, at the Arts Post, and if councillor McPherson would like, I have a spare box in my office for him, and he can personally distribute those.
Email it to me, please.
Very difficult to do, Dave. So, the vision of that catalogue is that it's a first, and I would expect that as other artwork is added, for example, the Michael Parakofi work that councillor Mallett is so enthused about, that could well be...
It's an earpiece.
It could well be a cover on the next one, plus obviously Sappamoor Jones, which was not completed in time. But I think it's a very exciting opportunity to celebrate a public art plan. Councillor McPherson also raised the Wintec wall. The truth is, it isn't the Wintec wall, it's the wall too, Wintec. Huge engineering problems around that. We currently have an approach from Peter Witterera on a multi-story glass, $20 million-type building, to go there with an adjoining walkway from Wintec over to the council wall and down in a lift that's just come in. I've had other approaches given directly to me. There was one more simple approach, and that was to take a Maori proverb and spread that in large black type across the wall as a permanent exposition. But unfortunately, all of those ideas cost heaps of money, there is no money in the budget, and if I found a philanthropic trust prepared to fund the proverb on the wall, it would be a very good use, given that the Wintec site is so sensitive to Nāti Wairiri, and you have heard that story in the past from Whirromupuki. So, I'd just like to congratulate Margie and Erin on the work that you've done to bring it to this stage. I think it's great that we've got competing trusts wanting to beat each other up and win the best space for the project that they have in mind. And I think the fact that this work is coming to the city in a philanthropic way is a wonderful way for public art to happen in the city. And this will trigger, in my view, the start of the contribution of developers to taking some concern about adding public art in an urban design context.
That wasn't a question, but it was very well said. It was a good sales pitch. I just have a quick question on, Margie, you and I were talking this morning around, because the staff have recommended on page 30, the terms of reference for a public art subcommittee be reported back to this committee. And we were having a chat around what other TLAs do. Do you have any comments on the formation of that subcommittee and how that's going to be better than what we have now?
I think it's really important, council has, there's been criticism around the kind of the timeframes that some of these, the processes take, and so that should help make those processes more, you know, run more smoothly. But in saying that we haven't taken the kind of robustness of the processes out of it, by having the three-stage process, it ensures that what's necessary to approve at each stage is, for instance, given to the panel. We've got opportunity for us to kind of debate and make recommendations and gather more information, so that it should make it kind of smoother and, yeah, less kind of cumbersome, but it's still in keeping that sort of rigor in this process, so yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, a recommendation on page 30, move by deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Young. Any debate? Councillor Gallagher?
Thank you. I'm looking forward to, you know, further detail around the terms of reference for the public art subcommittee, and whether in fact there's other pieces of work, you know, in the arts and creative field that may need or should be attached to that. So, I'll be quite interested in that, and obviously quite interested in terms of, from a governance structure point of view, if there are any lessons to be learned from other, you know, local authorities here in Australia. I think I agree with the deputy mayor, and thank those councillors who, you know, elected members who were involved. An example of all elected members, all elected members rolling up their sleeves and bringing a good work to our council in their different ways. But I think I agree with the deputy mayor in terms of just, you know, the philanthropic trusts and the philanthropic companies. And I think that we all acknowledge that we wouldn't be here in this space if it wasn't for some amazing individuals who have shaken biscuit tins and bent arms up the back and all of this stuff. And, you know, if you just track over the last decade, the move in Hamilton has been quite exceptional. You know, if you look, say, over the last 10, 15 years, it's been absolutely exceptional in terms of this space. And of course, the most recent was the amazing Sappamoor Jones event, and then we'll be looking forward to another couple of events in the near future. But that's all I'd say, I'm really looking forward to that report coming back at our SNP meeting.
Thank you, councillor. Any further debate? No? I'll put that to the vote, are those in favour? Any against? Okay, that's carried, thank you. Thank you, Erin, thank you, Margie.
Thank you.
Right, item number nine, page 49. This is the draft heritage plan and fund guidelines. This was part of the work programme from the original governance structure way back in 2013. Hi Nick, hi Alice. Can take the report as read. Is there anything you just wanted to particularly touch on? Oh, yes, sorry, yes, I did have it on my notes, sorry. Deputy Mayor, would you like to say something as Chair of the advisory?
Yes, thanks, Chair. Look, it was my privilege to chair this panel for the last 15 months, along with support from councillor Gallagher. We have two documents here today, Hamilton Heritage Plan and the Hamilton City Historic Heritage Fund Guidelines. And together, they represent an important step forward in the way in which our city links with the heritage we have remaining. It's a bit like the older person's policy, the public art policy and the Viking Plan, all of these contribute to the shaping of a city. And so, this plan comes to you today from a really expert panel of heritage consultants. Councillor Gallagher and I are simply hobbyists, but we've been around long enough to understand the importance of heritage in Hamilton. And when you look at the quality, and I'm not sure you have this in front of you, but we have Mrs Wendy Turvey, who was a principal environment adviser with Opus, very strong on RMA matters, but also an adviser to Tai'nu'i on their environmental plan. We have Dave Pearson, who is an Auckland-based heritage architect in business for over 25 years, and he's been involved in key restoration projects in Christchurch. But he's been previously involved here in Hamilton with the Hayes paddock area, and those older councillors will remember the debate we had about Hayes Paddock. I took great delight in giving Phil Twyford, the Labor spokesperson for housing, a copy of it last week when he visited council. So, he's also been involved in the Beal Cottage restoration. So, he is someone who's given up his time from Auckland to come here because he knows our area. Dr Anne McEwan is someone I much admire for her superior knowledge around heritage matters. And she was one of New Zealand's first, I think, doctoral students around architectural history. And now, she's in Hamilton. She's made strong, strong efforts around the heritage process. And at times, she disagrees with what Hamilton City Council does. She does that in Thames and in Auckland and all over New Zealand. So, we've been lucky to have Anne on that panel. Laura Callaway, who is well-known in Hamilton, but has also spent time in Christchurch, and she was actively focused on saving Hamilton heritage, Scott, for example, down in Victoria Street, and the bank in Victoria Street. And earthquake issues is one of her key focuses. Tom Rau represented Waikato Tai'nu'i. Tom was unable to attend because of other commitments, but was fully involved in the email process. Brian Square, who was the property council representative, is an architect with Chow Hill Architects with a keen heritage focus. And in particular, the reuse of heritage buildings and the development of earthquake strengthening techniques, which councillors will understand, government has just made an announcement a week or two ago about stretching out the time in terms of that. And I think that both Alice, who had a significant influence on the committee, and Luke will explain, I think, that what's going to happen in the future. So, we also had Robin Byron, who is a heritage architectural expert and who works for Heritage New Zealand. So, we've had absolutely a top level of consultants working on this project. Now, I appreciate that there are differing views around property rights, and that is one of the dilemmas facing heritage. However, this report is a draft report, and its purpose is to be released to enable targeted consultation with key stakeholders, and that staff will report back to the November 3 Strategy and Policy Committee meeting for the final draft heritage plan and fund guidelines or considerations by council. So, today, I ask councillors to support me to allow that process to occur. And I'd now like to hand over to Luke and Alice to take us through the report and to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I don't think we need to go through the report step by step, you can take it as read. I think the deputy mayor's outlined the process to date. Unless, Luke, there was anything pressing that you wanted to contribute?
No, councillor O'Driscoll, I think councillor Chisholm has given a very, very good precis of the process and the intent of the plan.
Okay, great, thanks, Luke. Quick questions?
Yeah, just for the benefit of the council, could you quickly touch on earthquake changes from central government, proposed changes? Or are you up to speed on that?
Yes, Alice can answer that question.
Just very loosely, because we know what our city's policy was.
So, councillors, our policy still stands, 2006 earthquake prone policy. The government announcement has retained the 34% in terms of new building standard, and there has also been a 10-year extension to heritage buildings in terms of when they are required to consider earthquake strengthening. So, in a nutshell, that's the other issues that have been raised through the changes, the prioritising of education and emergency buildings throughout the country, and also the identification of the country in different zones in terms of timeframes for the strengthening process. So, the government is now looking at the mechanisms to, in terms of what councils are required to do, and we're waiting for that. I understand.
So, the buildings that have been signed off already in Hamilton under the central government's, that still...
They still stand, it's just the timelines have changed.
Yeah, timelines are pushed out, but the buildings that have been signed off are fine.
That's correct. The standard of 34% still stays.
Thank you. Councillor Mallett, question?
Yes, just first of all, just when you're writing reports, executive summary, point number four, council resolved in late 2013, that's just inaccurate and imprecise reporting. What meeting was it done?
This was a council meeting 20th of November, 2013.
So, I bought this at another meeting, we just need to put the actual date of the meeting, otherwise it's of no use to anyone.
Yeah, point's taken.
Was it? Yeah, there you go.
Can I just add to that, because councillor Mallett does raise a point that is lacking in all of the reports, because I have the timeline of the mandate for this work, and it started in the governance structure in 2013, then went to, through the SNP Work Programme meeting of March 2014, and work programme for this year, 8th of April 2015. I know I would personally like to see those dates reflected in reports, I guess that's also for the GM and the CE, it would help, we've been asking for it a lot, so, yeah, just a note. Right, any other questions?
Yes, please. The recommendation B, and someone pointed out, that it is targeted consultation. Quickly reading the report, we talk about on page 49, on point nine, we talk about feedback received from both on the plan and the guideline from targeted consultation. Given that anyone's property at any time could get captured in this thing, why haven't we asked anyone to be part of the consultation? Why hasn't this been public consultation rather than targeted?
There is public, there is an ability for the public to provide feedback, and paragraph 21, it outlines...
In where, sorry?
Paragraph 21, it outlines the mechanisms by which wider consultation will be achieved. The targeted consultation referred to in the report is about how we will talk directly to people who own buildings that are listed as heritage items, plus those other groups that have been mentioned in the bullet points of paragraph 20.
Point 23, councillor Mallett, is general consultation to the wider public.
Okay, that says there will be general information released through City News, blah, 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 to highlight the process being undertaken, where people can view the draft documents to accommodate informal feedback from the general public contact. So, what's, okay, we don't normally call consultation informal feedback. What's informal feedback versus a submission?
There's no submission process associated with this. If people want to provide any feedback about the policy and the, sorry, the plan and the funding guidelines, they can do so via email to the City Planning, the relevant City Planning staff.
Okay, so I understand the target consultation to people who own properties that are currently listed.
Yes.
But there's a, as I said, that's just a very small part of the population of possible buildings or properties or trees or whatever, you know, whatever the structure is that could be captured by this thing. How do we, how do those people get, they're not part of target, they won't be targeted, will they? So, the only way that I, myself, for example, could come in and give a, if I wasn't a councillor, could come in and give a consultation would be how? Through this informal feedback?
Well, if you look at the rest of those bullet points, so, we're meeting with the individual owners of heritage structures, we're meeting with heritage groups, we're meeting with statutory bodies, we're, and business groups. Any other party that wants to communicate or engage with us, they can do so via that feedback identified in the report. Equally, if they want to meet with us, Alice and I are available to meet with them.
Okay, so what's the status of the feedback, what's the status of the feedback you get from that?
It'll be reported back to council. Summarised, and all feedback that we get, if the committee resolves to release the documents for consultation, any feedback we receive will be summarised and will be put back through to this committee at a future reporting date.
Okay, that's, okay, that then is different to what the recommendation says, doesn't it? The recommendation is silent with regard to that, it only talks about targeted consultation with key stakeholders, which means something different than the public.
The intention is, as outlined by the unit manager, is that there is specific groups being targeted, but there is wider information going out to the city through those channels as identified in paragraph 23. And I think all feedback captured by the team, including from all those channels, will form part of the information reported back ultimately when this comes back in November.
Chair, I would be happy to move the recommendation, but make the change to make point B clearer, pick up on councillor Mallett's points, which are fair enough.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. So, that would change to targeted consultation and public consultation, really, isn't it?
Guidelines to be released to enable consultation with key stakeholders as outlined in 22 and 23.
Yeah, okay, as paragraphs 22 and 23 of the report, yes, okay. Thank you. So, is that an amendment, or that resolution's been put yet?
And the Chair calls for a recommendation, I'd have to recommend, but with those changes, your points are well made.
Questions, councillor McPherson?
Yeah, a question to the deputy mayor, probably. Deputy Mayor, one of the biggest issues, it seems to me, we've had in recent times with heritage buildings, is that certain large organisations, mostly churches... heritage buildings, is that certain large organisations, mostly churches, and I can think of LDS Catholics and Presbyterians all in recent years, and we probably should add the Anglicans and Methodists and anyone else in there too, if we go back far enough, have been the ones that have wanted to demolish buildings, whether they're technically heritage or morally heritage buildings, and have caused contention and division in communities. How do we get it across to them that the value of preserving those buildings in an actual practical way? And I'm saying that not because I believe that they are private property, and not in almost, in all of those cases, there have been significant and sometimes complete public contributions to build those buildings in years gone by. They have been put in under the guardianship of those churches, but technically, they have become the owners and have the view, I'm sort of posing the problem to you, asking for your comments, I guess, they have the view that they're theirs to dispose of as they wish, and it has been very hard in almost every case to turn them around. And that seems, you know, sure, that it's the odd tree or the odd cottage that we have some issues with, and I can see the fund being more helpful in those cases perhaps than in the big, big cases where you're Fraser House and Temple View and the place across the river, the Presbyterian Zone, those sort of cases. So interested in your comments on that conundrum.
Yes, thanks councillor MacPherson. As you know, you and I were one on your Fraser House, and I won't explain that anymore.
Joined at the hip.
But you are right, I think the churches have largely let down the city and their approach to buildings that have been a very important part of the city from when the city began. And it is disappointing. I have to say that even with this plan in place, if it's accepted by councillors after the feedback process, there is still ultimately nothing to stop an owner of a heritage building going through, going through a resource consent process and ending up in the Environment Court. And the two good examples of that more recently were your Fraser House, went to the Environment Court, ruled for the church. And in Wellington, there was a beautiful building, Harcourt's Headquarters, and they wished to demolish the building, went to the Environment Court, and the Environment Court ruled against demolition. So it's on a case-by-case basis. Now, I've been working with a group interested in the Methodist Church in London Street. Now, there are barriers to that. The church is sitting on a very valuable site, two road frontages, Victoria Street and London Street. The church appears willing to give the building away for a dollar to access that development site. There is a school in the North East that's very willing to pick up that building for a dollar and make the earthquake changes and all of the other changes that would be necessary. It's a win-win situation, but there's a process that each party has to go through. So the church has got to go through a resource consent to allow it to be moved, but they will probably need to put up a case very strong, because they need to argue demolition, which is their right as a property owner. The school needs to argue through its resource consent to move it, that there's a gain for the community rather than a loss, because the purist historians would argue that the moment you move the church off the site, it is no longer a heritage item. Now, I disagree with that. I'd rather have a church in its existing condition somewhere else if demolition was the only alternative to that. So I think councillor MacPherson, that we will continue to have to fight the good fight for heritage in the future, but that is giving the property owner the right to seek the right to demolish a building. And I hope that this is just part of persuading people that there are fantastic options, particularly in reuse of heritage buildings. We look at the Good George Brewery over in Frankton, that's an excellent use of my old scout hall, where former councillor Jock McLoughlin Barnes taught me to tie a few knots. And I think that's an excellent reuse of a building, that suddenly is no longer part of a little community, a little village of houses. So you've got the bank, and I think that's also been a very successful reuse, and the Bailey's Building at the other end. So look, these are the things that are going to come at us. We need to have a policy, a position, to try and encourage owners to do what is good for the city, rather than what's in it in terms of a dollar. And I always use the Wintec example, we had a choice of ripping that down, probably for about the same money, or investing in the restoration of a 1924 iconic building. And everyone that I know who's been in that building acknowledges that building as a success story for recreating the New York Warehouse type thing. And sure, it could have been demolished, but the council at the time was bold enough to say, no, we want to save that. So, look, you've raised the dilemma that I think we will continue to face, but we need to make sure that we are allowing property owners, and this is the point that councillor Mallot will talk about, is the right of the individual property owner. So, for example, if I decided that councillor Mallot's house was a heritage house, has been designed by a famous architect...
It's a Johnny Come Lately and that group of houses.
Okay, all right.
Then, then I could, I could name it to the city. However, councillor Mallot would have the opportunity to oppose it, and I suppose that's not happened in the past. I'm looking forward to the day when that argument can be held, because, you know, again, I'm sensitive to the rights of the property owner.
Just a follow-up question, again, in terms of the fighting the good fight, as you said, they're having to continue to be done, one of the other issues is that whenever a proposal is put like this, our planners in the city look at it in purely technical RMA-type terms, and the latest episode relates to whether we should notify for public hearing or not. It would seem to me that in public, the case of public buildings especially, there is a, ought to be a greater public right for comment, and that we should have that built in, and I think many of us thought it was built into our district plan. Appears not to be. Appears that our planners take the narrowest possible view, which is the proposition that's almost invariably put to them by the developers, planners, consultants, and we, no one else gets a say at all. And the claim is that that's what the RMA requires. And we never, it seems, at a planning level, willing to push that boundary in favour of our heritage plan.
Well, like you, I do support publicly notified. You recall the case over in Gray Street and Clyde Street, where a developer came in and just simply in the middle of the night knocked the wall down, knocked the trees down, and we were going to end up with a awful development. Now, subsequently, another owner came in, purchased the property, received a non-notified plan, but when I heard who the new owner was, I had a high level of comfort, because the standard of the quality of the design was going to change an outcome that earlier was an awful outcome. So I look at the way the building has grown up, and it's an internationally designed car franchise, and I think that's a case where I was relaxed about non-notified. However, it would have been better to have had a publicly notified hearing, because when people saw the drawings, they would have less concern about that than under the previous situation.
Thank you. So let's, if I can just direct everyone back to the questions on the plan, rather than a wider discussion on heritage. I had a question, and I've lost it now. Has anyone else, councillor Mallot, you had a question?
Yeah, that's a bit, it gets a bit high level. I mean, I've heard the word publicly owned building mentioned a couple of times in conjunction with these churches. Now, legally, if a church owns a building, it's not publicly owned. You might call it colloquially, colloquially, can you tell me how to just say that word for me? So it's on the record as spoken.
I'd use another word, Gary.
Colloquially called a community building, but there is an owner that is not a public entity. It's not, it's not like it's a city council building. So in those situations, the churches you're talking about have every right as...
Point of order, I actually said public building, not publicly owned, because I recognise those points.
You did. And sorry, hang on, councillor Mallot, we are moving into a debate here, so I just want to stick with succinct, concise questions to staff on the report and the plan, and then we can go into...
Those have been debating for the last 15 minutes.
Yes, well, they have, but they got them first, yeah. So are there any questions, councillor King?
Thank you. On the heritage advisory panel, do you think to bring a bit of balance in a, dare I say it, a developer should be on that list, not for his own interests, but a developer who does good development in the city, who knows development well, and to bring a bit of commercial reality into, I see people like Brian around there and Brown Square and...
So we have mandated representatives that must be appointed to that panel, one of which is a representative of the Property Council. The Property Council is the peak body in Hamilton and the Waikato representing those interests, and that was the nomination that they put up as being the best and most qualified person to speak on their behalf. I think there's also other, the other consultants that we have there, that their approach, they operate daily in a commercial environment, providing very detailed advice to a very wide range of clients around New Zealand. So I would say that we have very, very good representation on the panel that have a degree of commercial acumen and awareness.
We know the Property Council have their own agenda, though, separate to what a standalone developer would have.
I can't accommodate it other than that they're recognised as a peak organisation representing the interests of developers in Hamilton and the Waikato region.
Okay, thank you.
On page nine, what does develop and implement a heritage overlay within the city centre by 2018 mean?
Are you talking about the plan now, councillor?
Yeah, it's on the plan, yeah. What number, councillor?
On page nine of the plan, point two.
Yeah, so that's effectively what that means, is that's a planning control other than listing a building. Could be, for example, a precinct area, so you're not listing individual buildings, but you may look at developing particular objectives and policies and design controls for an area that has a, has a particular character. So if you think of the southern end of Victoria Street in particular, that's where the main body of our remaining heritage buildings are, around the bottom end of Victoria Street and around Hood Street. So we've got individual buildings there, but there are other buildings which aren't protected. So an overlay might be a mechanism by which you would seek to protect the character of those buildings, other than individual listings.
And on the same page, bullet points four, promote the council's ability to purchase significant heritage that is under threat. So by going with this policy, we're putting the council in a position where they could become a property developer, buying old buildings and earning them. So page nine...
Yes, on the actions.
Bullet point four, yeah.
Yes, and that's essentially an action that the panel thought was a useful one to include in the draft plan, to, for the council to investigate essentially the possibility, if there were buildings that were listed or not listed, that were deemed by the council to be worthy of protection, that that's an option that we could look at. It doesn't necessarily mean we'll do that, it's just promoting that as a course of potential action.
So this is step one, impairing the council to buy a building that was under threat?
No, it's just, the draft plan is saying that as a, as one action in relation to protection, that's something that the council could include in its suite of tools to protect heritage buildings.
Buy them and own them and do them up, or whatever. Actually, council buying old buildings.
Potentially, but once again, that would be subject to a resolution of council if they decided to do that.
So what's on, if you go over to page eight, on point one, is that more of a plan for the whole city, rather than a heritage area like we talked about earlier?
Yes.
On page eight, that's more just pinpointing on a map?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. I see that you've got tree people involved in trees, heritage groups protecting trees as part of this. What you're consulting on page 51 of the, of the report, under 22, bullet point two.
Yes.
Can you fill me in on how trees, which live and die and only have a limited lifespan, why do they come under this policy of heritage?
Because some trees are actually listed as one of their elements of protection is heritage. So a tree can be a heritage item in terms of natural heritage for a number of reasons. It might be a significant person in the city planted it, it could represent an event, it could be a substantial variety that's grown healthily but hasn't always been so. Lots of different reasons. Our trees are under the natural environment chapter of our plan, and one of the elements, as I said, for protection, not, sorry, not solely, but one of the elements is heritage. So it is pertinent to involve the Waikato Tree Trust so that we get that sort of cover as well in terms of all aspects of heritage.
So the trees that somebody who owned them or liked the council, had an interest in, who protected that tree, and then it becomes, the tree was pre, had a protection order already put on it, or?
It's, the trees that would be captured through this, like the buildings and structures, are all already listed in the district plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mallot.
You've just said already listed, but haven't we already determined that there would be a process where other things can be listed?
That, that's, yeah, that is, that's a draft action that's included in there, so there's just...
So Alice, how does that square with what you just said?
Well, it squares quite simply because we've got to start with something, so we're starting with what's listed, and part of moving forward is the actions within the draft plan.
So in actual fact, you have the trees that are there already and the trees that might be listed later.
That's right, but...
So that's all trees in the city?
Would then go through a statutory...
Are possibly going to go through it.
It wouldn't be all trees, it's just, they're maybe additional trees, not the ones...
No, the ones that go through a full assessment.
So it's not just the trees that are currently listed, though, is it, as you just said before?
Well, it would depend on the actions...
No, 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 it's not, not just the trees that are currently listed, as you said before, is that right?
Moving forward, that would be...
Moving forward, okay.
Thank you. So chair, just a quick clarification. Gary, councillor Mallot will recall his district plan at his time on council, and that district plan records a number of buildings and a number of trees. My, I may be incorrect, but I thought there was at least 120 odd buildings on that plan that you and your team led, and I think in addition, there was something like 430 odd trees, most of which were owned by council in places like Memorial Park and Piranha Park. And those are already listed and have been since the late 80s, 90s. So they are already with heritage designation.
Yep, so that's what Alice is talking about, trees that are already listed. So what was your point?
Well, the point was that they were already listed, they're not going to be...
Yeah, I think we've determined that.
Okay, all right, that's enough.
Thanks for the help.
Just one...
Further question?
Yeah. I remember I didn't vote for it, but there was a vote for the $100,000, and now we've got incentives like no resource consent fees creeping in. Is that, was that what we originally agreed to when we, when we set the $100,000 aside, that there would be incentives on top?
The $100,000 is separate.
Yeah, but did we agree at the time to wrap incentives in, or has that crept in since we talked about it?
No, the incentives are set, the resource consent wavering is separate to the $100,000.
So this is, this report's the first time that councillors who went on a working group have heard about... group have heard about the incentives, is that right? Because we had talked about incentives.
No, we've had two briefing sessions, we've elected members on this, in which the proposition for the wavering of fees, and once again, that's a discretionary decision, we're not saying that, we're not suggesting it would occur in every instance, it's just another tool to incentivise heritage.
So you would apply for that?
Yes, you would seek that waiver, and the decisions would then come before council, like the funding allocation.
And there is no provision yet for zero rating on rates or giving rates incentives, which I can see.
The funding guidelines don't, the funding guidelines don't deal with rating at all. The funding guidelines are about the hundred thousand dollars you mentioned in the long term plan discussion.
Thank you.
But I would support your submission on that, councillor.
Yeah, okay. All right, now the deputy mayor signaled he's going to move the recommendation on page fifty.
With the alteration.
With the alteration being, under B, at the end, the enabled targeted consultation with key stakeholders as outlined in paragraphs twenty-two and twenty-three.
And twenty-two.
Was what councillor Malat raised, so that's been seconded by the deputy mayor, ah, sorry, moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Gallagher.
Thank you. Just, sorry, I was diverted by a very important message from Jude Parney, about coffee. Do you, the churches, we just, we put the churches, faith groups in there as a key group?
Sorry, can I just, just to be clear, before we go any further, just point of order, just clarity on the actual resolution that's been moved?
Yep, yep.
The word, I don't think the word targeted now needs to be in the resolution.
No, we can target it out.
Okay, well.
Enable consultation with key stakeholders and those.
As per, as per paragraphs twenty-two and twenty-three on page fifty-one of the agenda.
Okay, okay, as per, yes, we've got that, we've got that democracy.
Madam Chair, what I recorded was the committee authorises the draft heritage plan and the draft historic heritage fund guidelines be released to enable consultation with key stakeholders and the public as outlined in paragraphs twenty-two and twenty-three.
So mover happy with that?
Would the mover add, would the mover add faith communities or church groups, church and faith communities, so that just, it's just to make sure, it's not just churches?
I think staff, can you pick that up?
Yes, we can.
You can pick that up?
Yes, we can.
Yep, councillor Gallagher? Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, right, any debate? We have had a considerable amount of debate, but councillor Gallagher has not spoken.
No, I'll save my warm congratulations to the staff and the committee and the chair when it comes back, but I just want to say that I think I've been very, very impressed with the staff team, and I suspect we've all been on a learning curve, you know, and I think that, so I think through this exercise, we've upped our own intellectual capacity within this organisation in terms of, you know, both at elected and staff level, and I think that's been really good, and I'm very, very impressed with the work that they have done along with the committee. Also, I think councillor Chestman's presentation, if I can say so just before, was actually really interesting, and it just shows that on this, in this issue, you know, he's right across this and right across the challenges. I pick up councillor King's point, very valid point about how do you actually put heritage alongside, you know, the individual property developer, because in this city we're not like the Paris, which was a, you know, product of the grand Napoleon plan, good central planning, thanks to Napoleon. This city is a mix of its history, and it's a mix of contemporary and historical, how do you blend, or how can you blend the two, you know, to good urban design, and also very importantly, which this policy talks about, the arts post being a good example of how do you generate, you know, contemporary use, you know, for historic buildings, how do you blend a historic building? The Wintec is a good example of how you blend historic building with contemporary architecture. So they are all out of there. One of the things that I think, and I observe councillor McPherson and councillor Chestman for the work they did, or tried to do with Lois Livingston around the Hamilton East corner, Gray Street corner and Ufrates House, we are aware of the forlorn attempts by the deputy mayor to save the little chapel, the Methodist Chapel opposite Steel Park. We are aware with all the activity of councillor McPherson and community groups and a former MP for Hamilton West and current MP for Hamilton West in terms of the Temple View precinct area. And the one thing that I really think is absolutely crucial is we've got to take every opportunity, that if there is an application to substantially alter or demolish a building that we identify as heritage, then that's got to be in the open process. It's not time to duly initially frustrate, but we've got to avoid the situation where six o'clock in the morning, something happens, and then we read about it in the Waikata Times later in the day. And I think with respect, the Methodist Chapel was a very good example of just how we had reached a low point where the deputy mayor of this city had to rush in an attempt to save, and we didn't succeed. So there's lots and lots of learnings from there, but this is a really good step ahead, and I do stress that I think where we are at now is due no small part to the leadership of this panel in terms of the deputy mayor's own expertise in the work he's done, and I think we're landing in a, in a good, good area. Time will tell, time will tell if we can avoid some of those six o'clock demolitions in the future, time will tell.
Thank you councillor, councillor McPherson.
I'm afraid councillor Gallagher that I think time has already told. We have legislation now that reinforces the culture in this and other councils, and that's not the fault of any one person on this council, it's the fault of the system and the allegiance of our planning staff, I have to say, and I'll say it to their face, to the RMA culture, I'm not saying to the letter of the law either, to the RMA culture, and not to things like what is otherwise very good heritage plan and very good work that's been done by individuals here. The allegiance is not to our plan, it's to a set of, it's to an interpretation of a set of regulations and laws, and that interpretation is open to challenge, but we are never the ones challenging it. Unfortunately, I don't have confidence that things will change, I have confidence in a negative sense that every time an application for demolition or dramatic change of heritage, whether it's listed or otherwise building, it will be treated in the narrowest possible way. And that is the problem that I have with the way things are done, not just in this council, but in all councils, probably around New Zealand, certainly ones that I'm aware of. They have the same problem up in Auckland, the middle of the night, the, well, with the Wellington Street buildings a few years ago, it was the middle of the night, quite literally about quarter to twelve, just before midnight, and the six AM, as you mentioned in the morning with the Methodist one, things like that. That's what will continue to happen in some of the more dramatic cases, but there's less dramatic ones, there's one happening right now out in Temple View. And our plans, as good as they might be, aren't worth anything if they're not being followed by our council.
Thank you councillor, any further debate? Councillor King?
We.
Debate, yep.
Okay, so I, I'm not comfortable with this, I'm not comfortable with the clause where council has the ability to purchase buildings that are under threat, that makes me nervous. I know there's members around this table who would love to get into property development, but it's not, it's all, all it's tricked up to be. I, I think this is going to frustrate property owners in the city, people who are trying to better the city, do things for the city, there are things like the arts post and the bank where beautiful jobs are done that, we're outside of this policy, we've got our bridges which are naturally obviously protected, but people do own properties, and as soon as a heritage order goes on a property, basically it becomes a very undesirable property to own. And that's the dilemma, is taking it from a commercial, a property that has commercial reality tucked around it to a property which really has, it becomes a frustration to whoever owns it and with outsiders telling them what to do with their own property. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you councillor, councillor Malat.
Yeah, similar to Andrew's points, I won't be supporting the policy, and it's for a very simple reason, and Gordon pretends he believes in it, but he doesn't, that is that private property rights are superior to the community's rights over a building. There is a person who owns a building, they've built it, they've financed it, they, they own the thing, and ownership means something in a first world country, and just because someone doesn't like the painting or the way that a building is being treated, has got nothing to do with them, the person who has the rights over that, who has to have the superior rights over it, is the person who owns the building, or the tree, if that's the, that's the level we've got down to. So until such time as I see a heritage policy that has a big bold statement at the start that this, this policy respects and will protect private property rights, I can't support it.
Thank you councillor. Right, there have been no further speakers, the deputy mayor has moved that, councillor Gallagher has seconded that, I'll put that to the vote, all those in favour? Any against? Councillors King and Malat? Right, that's been carried, thank you. Thanks Luke, thanks Alice. Okay, stormwater bylaw, page eighty, and this is the deliberations and decisions report.
Excuse me, I have to go.
Okay, thank you councillor Malat, thank you. And you can take the report as read. Now, we do, committee, we do have to deliberate and make the decision, so we can just do that just in two parts like we've done in the past. So the deliberation issues and options are on page eighty-one point sixteen, report can be taken as read, this is the last step in the final process of this bylaw, so I'll go straight to the committee if they're, hang on, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, no one else can leave. Oh, Martin's just gone to get ring, no, yeah, okay. We're okay, thank you. No toilet breaks for the next five minutes. So are there any questions, if we do deliberate first, are there any questions on any of the issues raised in those boxes under twenty? There's not many issues raised through the submissions. Nope, nope. No questions on there, all right, some minor changes, aren't they, you're recommending? Okay, so we'll go to part two, decision and recommendations for adoption, are there any questions on the staff's recommendations from what's arisen through that process? Do you want to just really briefly just touch on the changes that you have, you are recommending? There's not many there, is there?
Yep, certainly the changes that we're recommending is to reword the definition of overland flow path so that it aligns with the district plan, reword the clauses, read word clause seven one B to be a bit more pragmatic in addressing risk and have an emphasis on education, replace the word facet with part, so it's easier to read and understand, and there are some minor changes throughout the bylaw in the same vein as replacing the word facet with part, just to make it easier to read.
And then our committee, their track change bylaw, thank you for doing track changes, starts at page eighty-four. So are there any, any questions on the report? Yep, councillor King?
Have we had a bylaw in the past?
A stormwater bylaw, no?
No.
Say that again.
We haven't had a stormwater bylaw in the past, no.
Why do we need it? Have you ever needed to prosecute anybody?
So, no, we haven't been in a position to prosecute anyone in the past, we have had a number of spills in the past where the stormwater bylaw would have helped us through our response with the, with the people responsible.
Is Hamilton City the biggest offender with spills?
No.
Whether accidental or on purpose?
Not, not at all, that council itself.
What about our waste, what about our, say, at our plant, at our.
So we have had two spills at our wastewater, one at our wastewater treatment plant, that we had wastewater going into the stormwater system, into an unnamed trib, and then to the Waikata River, and then another spill at the water treatment plant where we had chemicals going into the Waikata River as well.
So we've had two spills, but we've never had, we've never needed to prosecute the public?
No.
And does the Waikata Regional Council have a bylaw that we could use, that they could use if they're required, if they needed to?
No, the regional council does not have a bylaw, they actually support Hamilton City Council to have the bylaw.
Point of order on that question. I understood that we were prosecuted for at least one of the spills you've talked about by the regional council, so under what process did they prosecute us? Because it seemed to be what councillor King was getting at.
Sorry, I misunderstood the question, that we were prosecuted under the Resource Management Act.
Well, we were prosecuted, were we? Yeah. So, and, and the what process were we prosecuted? And I think councillor King is asking what other, or leading to what other mechanisms are, and I'm trying to find out that particular one that you've mentioned to him, what mechanism were we prosecuted under, and why was that considered, I guess, for the, as being suitable?
We considered, it was under the Resource Management Act, we did at the beginning when we went through this process in February, beginning of last year, we looked at what we could do under the Resource Management Act, what the regional council could do under the Resource Management Act, and where the gaps were, and this is where this bylaw comes into play.
So what gaps are we trying to fix? Sorry, I've interrupted councillor King's one, but it's, yeah, what, what gaps are that have been identified that this will fix that weren't available when we were prosecuted, or that when we took action against Mr Steve McLennan for the leak from the tower block, oil from the tower block about a couple of years ago?
If I can just park that for a moment, just talking to the GM, we do have to be careful of the process here, we're discussing the bylaw because we are in the decision phase, so really we need to be keeping our questions and comments around the, what this feedback has been on the submissions, that rather than starting to debate the whole issue again.
Well, surely the question of whether we have a bylaw or not is germane.
It's part of.
Well, we can't park that if we're going to vote, I mean, at this stage, I'm not going to vote for it because I'm not convinced about whether we need a bylaw, not, not about the submission feedback.
Yeah, yeah.
It's about whether we need that at all.
Can you, can you make that any clearer than I did?
I think the key point here is that council have already determined through a determination report, and then also the public action of a draft bylaw to have a bylaw, this is now the receipt of the submissions from the public and from the engagement process on, on the bylaw, and the debate is on those, so some of the questions and debates, re-debating matters that have already been determined by council, which was that they have determined that a bylaw is the appropriate response to address the issues raised, they then have agreed, council has agreed a majority to consult a draft bylaw, there are now matters from submitters to be debated.
Okay, so did any submitters suggest that a bylaw was not necessary?
No, all the submitters were in support of the bylaw.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to vote on something that we can't debate today?
You have, council has already determined that a bylaw is the appropriate mechanism, you are considering the submissions based on the draft proposed bylaw that you went out with a consultation on, so if you don't agree with the bylaw, you would vote against it, but we should not be re-debating whether a bylaw should be in existence or not, you've already made that decision as council.
And what the staff are saying is that, what you're saying is submission analysis report, a hundred percent of the submissions supported the bylaw.
Correct, they just, they just submitted on aspects of the bylaw to be modified, and staff have recommended changes to the bylaw.
One, two, three, hang on, hang on, one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, we have to stop the meeting because we don't have a quorum. No. Is he coming back?
He's out of the room, madam chair.
Thank you, I can see that. All right.
Chair, I think that's an outrageous situation where a councillor will allow this committee to go into an in-court situation and wait outside the door, smiling at me.
It's the outrageous situation, it's the fact that everyone else has left already.
Yeah, all right, we have to adjourn.
In terms of standing orders, madam chair, you need to adjourn the meeting.
All right.
Let's wait a minute.
So we're all adjourned.
I think that's a consequence of some commentary in the media, that's what you get.